All right, good evening to everyone. All the October 5th city and Mount Vernon council meetings are ordered. Just a reminder, we are in a public building, a public meeting, all guests are required to wear masks unless they are able to maintain a six-foot separation during the meeting. We do have masks available. If you do not have one, you are unable to meet that. Six-foot separation requirement. I believe Keith Shannon has masks available. With that said, the one change that we do have to the agenda is under discussion item, item two. Matthew is not with us tonight, so we'll go ahead and table the LBC day camp report until next council meeting. Otherwise, I'm not aware of any other changes or anything in motion.
I'll make a motion approved, the agenda is presented with L2 being dropped.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? No. Period. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on an item? Keep in mind, if there's something on the agenda, please wait until that item on the agenda is read.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Jensen. I'm the director of Main Street and Marketing for the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group. As you're all aware, most of our festivals have been canceled this year, most. And we have been working, this is Mary, I've been working with one of my volunteers, she's the chair of the Magical Night Committee. We've been working very hard with a proposal to have a drive-through Magical Night this year. It's marketed to cars and not to pedestrians. So, the kerfuffle that normally happens on Magical Night inside the bank or inside First Street Community Center Building or inside the churches of the visitor center will not happen. We are going to ask guests to drive their vehicles down First Street. And we will have live activity. And the First Street Community Center is going to put on a live retelling of The Grinch Who Stole Christmas for stage for cars. And I'm working with students at Cornell about a live charlatan Christmas that would just happen on almost as living statues. It will be the Lumina Rays and the Amatronics and everything. But it's all marketed toward cars. The tricky part this year is that we're going to do it on Wednesday, the 2nd, instead of the traditional December 3rd, because the stores are normally open on December 3rd. And we just figured if we closed down the streets, that would impact them negatively, which they don't need right now. So, anyway, there is a proposal that I think Chris will give to you, that the committee worked very hard on. And we will be shutting down the streets. We've already worked with Doug Shannon. And we are going to have four officers helping us out that night with traffic flow and stuff. So, anyway, that was that. Okay, so I'm just letting you know.
Remind us what date that is, Joe, with the December.
Wednesday, the 2nd of December. Instead of traditionally, it'd be Thursday, the 3rd. So, we're going to have to up our marketing to make sure everybody's aware of it.
I just want to thank you and Mary and the committee, because this is a favorite among amongst the community members. And obviously, you guys have been forced to be even more creative, and I really appreciate your efforts to do that.
Well, creative is something we know, is in here. So, on just another note, I wanted to let you know that I picked up a $14,000 out of my mailbox today from the nonprofit recovery act. So, $14,000 in a time when we really need it as a nonprofit, as all of you were very aware. We have yet to start our investment drive, but we are anticipating it's going to be a lot less. So, it was a different habit, and I just want to let you know that that's coming. And then, there's a $75,000 challenge grant that I haven't been told that we have it yet, but I feel really good. And by the 15th, I'll announce, and I feel really good that we're going to get it. So, that was very exciting. So, it's an exciting thing to happen at CDP World. And thank you for listening.
Before you go, one quick question. So, the first of, I think it's three Shop Small Saturdays?
Yes.
Has occurred.
That's true.
The other two are the end of?
October 24th.
Okay. And then, the one?
November 28th, when it normally is. So, it's the fourth Saturday of each month.
Excellent, okay.
And the first one went very well.
I thought so, yeah.
Of course, we've gotten permission to close down the streets for that event. And I was very clear when I was here before that if the weather bad, we're not even going to attempt that. Several of the restaurants did not participate, did not have tables outside. And I was speaking with Nick Neeson, and we're going to think about bringing picnic tables from other parts of the parks or whatever. So, it just looks more festive than we believe it, that food at any restaurant can sit out there and eat. And I spoke to two of the restaurants today who were supportive of that idea. So, anyway.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Always a pleasure.
Thanks, Joe. Is there anybody else? All right. Next item is Halloween announcement. This doesn't take much time going on in the past. And we never really officially approved trick-or-treating. Normally, it was just a day and time. Obviously, with the crazy year that we're having, 2020, we're not going to establish day or time for trick-or-treating. So, if you do choose to participate, you'll just make sure that you follow a lot of the guidelines that we already have in place. Let your trick-or-treating group to your household or the bubble you've already been distancing with, skip areas or streets that are busy, not stopping at homes, not following safety guidelines, such as wearing, such as mask-wearing and distancing, set up contact with candy delivery methods, coughing candy or setting out treats, excuse me, if you're sick or if you have been in contact with someone who is sick with COVID or has symptoms of COVID, stay home, avoid shared spaces, do not allow for distancing of six feet, stay at least six feet away from those who do not live in your home, wash, sanitize hands often, or mask over your mouth and nose, make sure that's under or over a Halloween costume mask. Remember that Halloween masks do not offer appropriate protection. At homes that are preparing for trick-or-treatings, turn on their lights, off their lights, and obviously, those who are not should leave their lights off. Again, it's an unfortunate year, holiday that a lot of families look forward to, but it's under the circumstances that it's just the right steps that they take. Anybody have any questions, Congress? All right, we'll move on.
I was just wondering if the city has considered alternative ways of celebrating Halloween that would be a little more formalized and socially distanced?
No.
Is that not something that we're interested in trying? I have a suggestion.
Feel free.
Okay, so, in the spring?
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Megan Yamamushi, 202 Second Street Southwest.
Thank you.
In the spring, the school had a very successful parade of teachers where they drove around most of Mount Vernon. They had a very carefully laid-out path that they were all taking. And the students stayed at home, or a few of them needed to move a little bit to get closer to the parade route. But, you know, it was not like wall-to-wall people kind of a parade. It was a very spread-out parade. And they were driving and waving, and they had signs and that kind of thing. And I thought we could adapt something like that for Halloween, using basically the same parade route that the school used, because it did cover most of the children who live in Mount Vernon. And then, the children could stand in their yards or close to their yards, wearing their costumes. And folks who wanted to see them could drive around and see them at some scheduled time. Halloween fortunately falls on a Saturday this year, so we could do it Saturday afternoon. We wouldn't need to do it in the evening. And, of course, if groups wanted to drive around and throw candy as well, the way that happens in parades, it would be a way for the candy to get to the kids. And it would just be a little bit more of an organized event, but also safely distanced.
Unfortunately, we don't own the, you know, how it operates or not.
I mean, it wouldn't prevent people from trick-or-treating in the evening if we did it in the afternoon, but it would be a way for the children to show off their costumes, get some candy, and then, if the parents, like I have a four-year-old, I'm not comfortable taking some trick-or-treating this year. I'm not real comfortable having people come to my house to trick-or-treat either, but I still would love to participate in Halloween in some way.
Megan, I appreciate you coming in, and, you know, I like the creativity. I do know that the school event was very successful, and the kids loved it. So, you know, there would be no opposition, but it's just not something that the city is in a place to organize right now. But if you or, you know, friends or anyone else that you know would be willing to do it?
I would be happy to help. I don't know what the steps are in terms of getting permission to do it on the city's
It's really just basically a notification. You submit the route, and it goes through Doug's office. He just notifies the various city departments. And I would echo what Congressman West said. I'm assuming the city would be supportive of such actions. We're just not sanctioning anything this year. And the council's never formally voted on Halloween either, but, yeah, if there were event organizers that wanted to try and put something together, the application is one page, it's pretty simple, so.
Megan, have you thought about contacting Kate Stanton at the school?
No. I know the Care Club is looking to do something, so maybe we could coordinate.
Yeah. Yeah, good luck, because I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm going to be here to see something.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other comments? Teacher brought up masks and Halloween. I just want to go on the record as saying that I don't think Halloween masks or these masks would be any more effective than a Halloween mask in stopping the spread of COVID-19.
Anybody else? Nope. All right, we'll move on to consent agenda, approval of council amendments from the September 21th council meeting to a liquor license, Mount Vernon keep the ballot, and appoint Matt Nelson and Emily Ryan for the housing commission.
I will move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second, this is Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? No. Period. All right, thanks to Matt and Emily for their willingness to support the housing commission. Next item is ordinance approval. Ordinance 8-17-2020A, Amendment Chapter 135, Street Use and Maintenance of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. This is a fairly final reading, person up a view, correct? Anybody have any thoughts about whether I was entertaining a motion for this item?
There are no special items on this. I would make a motion approved. Ordinance 8-17-2020A, Amendment Chapter 135, Street Use and Maintenance of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code, per reading.
One second. Any comments? Roll call for you.
Rose?
Yes.
Rob Bush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
All right, next item, ordinance 9-8-2020A, Amendment Chapter 15, Mayor of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. This is a fairly final reading. Person up a view to have for this item as well.
Well, with that, I will move approval of ordinance 9-8-2020A, Amendment Chapter 15, Mayor of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code.
I will second.
Any comments? Roll call for you.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
Rob Bush?
All right, next item, ordinance 9-8-2020B, adopted Chapter 49, mandating face covering during public health emergencies of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code. This is a fairly final reading. Chris, anything to add?
I don't have anything additional.
Do we have any comments from anybody in the audience on this item?
Keith Hubner, 304 Palisade Road. So, in light of the fact that you were served tonight with a lawsuit requesting that you not proceed forward with this, I would ask the council not to proceed forward with the third reading, and I would ask you to rescind the actual mask mandate.
Thanks, Keith. Is there anybody else?
I'm sorry?
So, thanks, Keith. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? So, where's that? Interpretation motion from?
I'd just like to say that I don't think any of these people have read Paul Turner's email that he sent us, but I think he stated it perfectly. This is more of a divisive thing. It separates, it's even more, and by voting on this, it's just going to make it, just like I said, even if not one person gets a fine, the action itself is divisive, and this council is taking that on themselves. So, go forward.
I did read his email, and I appreciate it, and it was respectful. And I would like to say, it is not my purpose to divide the community rather than issue out of our concern for others should unite us. And I have to echo that as well. I am not in favor of rescinding any of the previous actions that we have taken. And I am anxious for us to consider moving forward with a formal ordinance. There is too much at risk in my personal life for you to disregard me as a human being. And that's what I feel like each and every one of you who are sitting in here finding this are doing, is you are disregarding me as a human being.
You're disregarding the Constitution of the United States.
I have before, thank you, you do not. If you want to come up and be recognized, please stand up and be recognized.
I'll do that.
I am saying what I feel, and I do not want to argue with you.
I am entitled to my opinion and not yours right now.
This is not a divisive issue. This is a public health issue. This is a public health issue. If you read the documentation that is out there from public health officials, and open your eyes and listen to what's going on, you will discover that this is not you and me, this is all of us together.
That's right.
And because you put up this wall, and because you have chosen to take this as a divisive action, that bad is on you guys. I'm done. I will say, I researched some data. Mount Vernon, as of today, Lynn County site has had 77 cases. In the state of Iowa, from the state site, the numbers show that 13% of the cases in the state are asymptomatic. We also know that asymptomatic people can spread it, and the Iowa trend in general is still continuing to go up. And it's that asymptomatic piece that is really worrying me, because you could stand there without a mask on and be spreading your asymptomatic, okay? And that's what I really, really worry about, and I really want us to take care of each other and not think that this is something that's being done to you. Okay? You can disagree with me, I'm just telling you my opinion, okay?
And now that you said that, you also got to realize, when you're bringing up health issues, again and again, you see in Cedar Rapids paper or national papers, alcoholism on the rise, abuse on the rise, all suicides on the rise. So, why are you considering those people? No, you're not.
That's not what this was.
So, again, yeah, you consider one side, I consider another. I'm taking care of other people, their mental health. You're not taking care of their mental health, you're taking care of their health, their physical health.
And that's very fair.
But this is very important, too.
I do not.
So, when you get on these people who were divisive, no, it's both ways, because I see it a different way. I don't see it this way, I see it this way.
Okay. And I don't think that's a fair thing to say, because that's not the topic of our discussion today as a council, is not the mental health of people.
This is part of that.
It's very likely, but this is a very targeted ordinance, and it doesn't have to do with mental health. And I'm not arguing that that consideration is real, and you are absolutely correct. But that's not what we're talking about at the council today.
In general, yes, we are. It affects that.
There's a lot of things that affect everything that we do.
Jerry? Tom Scott? Anything from you two? Which one is fun?
Jerry has something.
Oh, I thought she wanted me to be recognized. Jerry DeRozier, Building 101. I, it's amazing that, we, first of all, we have got to, as Americans, figure out a way to talk about this, okay? Because we're all here, and we all, nobody's going anywhere. But I find it amazing that you said that this is not a divisive issue.
No.
It's a divisive issue, wasn't you wanted to be a knowledge of divisive issue? You think I want to get up here and talk like this in front of everybody? I don't, okay? I've had COVID in my family, my brothers and sisters, okay? I understand it, I know people that have died from it, or they say that they died from it, they died of something that may have been COVID-related. But it's, when you say that, you talk about people's, we're not here talking about people's mental health, man, I think we are. I think we are talking about people's mental health, because to stand up and say, whoa, hold it, because really, you know, if you ever been in a room where somebody passed bad gas, you know how it goes around the room, and you, everybody gets it. That's really crude, but it's really true. And so, the size of a viral droplet of COVID is so minute. And, you know, you talk about the science, I got it, science doesn't lie, but scientists can be bought, okay? And this world, I don't trust anything in this world, okay? Right here included, myself included. I'm just one of all of us. But it is, it is a gross overreaction, in my opinion, one man with an opinion, to think that something that doesn't have the death rate of most of the things that have ever happened, the cases are going up because they're doing more testing. That's going to happen. That's going to happen. What the country is doing, all the testing, so we got all the cases. The cases of people that are dying from it are, those numbers are way down. The numbers of, you go to the CDC's website and look at it and talk about, they've taken it down to, it's a really low percentage. I don't like to say numbers in public, but it's a really low percentage of everybody that they said died of COVID to what they say actually died of COVID, without any other morbidities, without any other complications, just COVID. It's a really small number. And it's a terrible thing. And it was released on us, that's my opinion, okay? And we're just as deep into it as anybody is. But to think that this, the one thing that I do not want to be a part of is a one-world government, all right? That's how deep this goes. Because this is training. It's a test run to see what we'll do. And they have got the answer. And that's all I got to say. I'm sorry.
I thought to say this, cases don't put people in the hospital. The hospital counts of all.
Yes. Name and address, please.
Hi, Shannon Thompson, 1625 First Avenue, Southeast Cedar Rapids. I represent Hunter Parks. I was here two weeks ago as well to discuss this. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I wear my mask probably as much as you do. I would wear my mask, probably be past this ordinance or not. But it's not about masks, it's not about the efficacy of a mask or whether or not we wear them. The issue that Mr. Parks has is that it is illegal for the city council to pass this ordinance, because only the governor, under the powers given and conveyed upon her from the disaster proclamation, is able to institute a mask ordinance. And this is going to go to litigation, and I do not think it's about, for some people maybe about the mask, but it's ultimately about whether or not the city council has the power to do this. And we do not believe they do. The Attorney General's Office, yes, it hasn't issued a formal opinion yet, but it's issued two informal opinions. The Attorney General's Office, both Attorney General and the Second-in-command, Jeff Thompson, they're both Democrats, the office has still said, we do not believe that cities and counties have the legal authority to pass mask ordinances. So, I ask that you reconsider this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Siobhan Breiley, 1241 Pheasant Valley Street, Iowa City. I represent, I also represent Hunter Parks, I also represent Keith Hubner and Global Water Services, the other two plaintiffs in this action. And I would just like to say that my personal beliefs are that we should all wear masks. I believe it's a good idea. But I agreed to do this work because it's important that whether our personal beliefs urge us to take certain steps or refrain from certain activities, we should not let those beliefs guide whether municipal bodies, you know, to, whether we decide that a municipal body has the authority to do something like require the citizens and persons visiting Mount Vernon to wear masks. And I did the legal research, and I am convinced that the legal position in the paper served upon you this evening is correct. I, you know, one of my partners in my law firm, you know, says, I wear a mask because it's the right thing to do, not because somebody ordered me to do it. And, you know, one of my dearest friends, I moved to Iowa five years ago from New York. One of my dearest friends was an incredibly successful attorney in New York, and he died of COVID, and he is from Mount Vernon. And I know that he would oppose a mandate that goes against the constitution of this state and the laws of this state. So, I too urge you to reconsider.
Thank you. Tom?
I don't know what the context of whatever papers were served to you here, what that was all about, I don't know.
Next to it.
Can't speak to that. I think I made the first motion, the motion to approve the first reading of the mask ordinance, and I know I made the motion for the second reading. Jerry, I got to tell you, I don't agree with what's accepted. I mean, this one or the other.
That's the world we live in.
Opinion and so on and so forth.
But I still respect you, Tom, okay? I don't hate you, all right?
And I respect you, Jerry. For me, and I almost feel like, for me, it becomes an issue of the fiscal cost enforcement. Is this going to be that hill for me? And I'm not sure this is going to be that hill. It's the right thing to do, absolute, this is what I'm talking about, it's the right thing to do. But do I want to put that fiscal on the table?
I would, given that we have papers that were introduced today that no one has seen nor read, I think it would be wise for us to... delay the third reading, if that's a possibility, so that we could review what has been newly presented to us as a consideration of our steps moving forward.
Well, I think it's quite clear what's in the papers.
Well, I I still, without reading it, I wouldn't hate to just presume that we would all be of the same opinion.
We can have a have one of the two lawyers summarize it in probably three seconds in terms of what the document says.
I mean, I'd certainly be happy to if that.
Yes.
If you'd like. So the the documents that were served are a petition for a declaratory judgment and an injunctive relief, asking the court to determine that the city council does not have the authority to issue a mandate requiring persons within the city to wear masks, you know, under the circumstances stated. And an application for the temporary injunction while the proceeding is pending. You know, supported by an affidavit. And this is based on an analysis of the Iowa Constitution and the statutes, the Iowa code, governing the authority to respond to a state public health disaster emergency, which the COVID-19 pandemic is a public health disaster emergency under the Iowa code. But under the Iowa Constitution and the Iowa code, only the governor has the authority to direct citizens of the state of Iowa to do certain things or refrain from doing certain things in the situation where there is a public health disaster emergency. And there is a limited amount of input the Iowa Department of Public Health can provide to the governor in that situation. And the Department of Public Health is also authorized to convey information to the public. But absent a delegation of the governor's powers, no one else has the power to tell people in the state of Iowa whether they are required to, for instance, wear a mask or shelter in place or anything else. So, you know, the information in the code interpreted by case law, you know, and the information in the constitution interpreted by case law says that cities are exceeding their home rule authority when they take actions such as requiring citizens in the city to wear masks, you know, at all times when they can't keep six feet away, except, you know, when they're maybe outdoors. So that's basically what is in the papers. I do believe that that is the correct analysis of the situation. While it may be better for communities in Iowa to be able to make their own decisions, unfortunately, that is not what is in the constitution and the Iowa code. So, you know, I do believe that if the council proceeds to the third reading and passes the ordinance, there will be litigation, which will unfortunately have financial consequences for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Based on what I just heard, I don't think I necessarily heard from her anything that was new that we hadn't heard before. But I do agree with you. I feel a little bit uncomfortable that we haven't seen the document. And I would be okay with delaying it.
I think it's up to you. I'm assuming this document will get filed if the third reading were to pass, correct?
The document has already been filed.
It has been filed.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it.
Served this evening on the table.
I read it on the website tonight. On Montverde website.
So whether you delay this or not.
I I guess. I I believe that the city attorney should be the document. Because previous indication that we've gotten from him has run has has steered our discussion perhaps. And I want to make sure that we have his advice in council as well. He's not here.
I have no opinion whether we table it or back on tonight, tonight I'll just follow the role of a group of that. I have a strong opinion in the way of that.
And I'm the only one we haven't heard from. And not that that means that I actually have to say anything, but I feel like I ought to. And and to me, I think we, Keith has made clear where he was coming from. Mr. Parks's attorney has made clear where this was headed. And and while I don't relish the idea of having to spend money on what I think is intentionally divisive, you know, legal brinksmanship. It it still, nothing effectively for me has changed. I do believe this is the right thing to do. And what I don't want to do years from now is think that we could have done something that would have helped people. And because we were worried about the financial aspect, didn't do it. But if, but I'm not necessarily opposed to getting our attorney's opinion on not only the changing landscape of the proclamation, but also what we've just been handed. So I would be all right with that as well.
So we don't know necessarily what the right language is.
Should we table it? Is that what we would do?
Is that the right language? Okay, so I would like to move that we table the third reading of the ordinance.
One second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Weasley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
I have an apology.
All right, next item. Motion for approval. We're looking at 10 dash 2028, approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment through agreement for private development binding between the city of Mount Vernon and Midwest Development.
So. It's page 10. That map. Essentially what Spring Metal is doing is they're switching phase two and phase three. Obviously, their reasoning behind it is market-based. It does speed up the connection from Spring Metal to Candlestick. From staff's perspective, this is good for those individuals that live in Candlestick, probably not. But having a second entrance or the use of Candlestick to get into the subdivision as more and more houses are built is ideal for staff. So we are recommending approval of this change. We're not moving, we're switching four and two, we were just switching three and four, or two and three. And it's likely, even though it says October 2024, that phase three now is being moved up as is.
So are you saying that these completion, these approximated completion dates would stay the same, just were relatively? I mean.
They're in there to give them plenty of time in which to move forward with each individual phase. That doesn't mean they can't start them sooner.
Gotcha. And when you say switching phase two and phase three, we're just switching the the order in which they're done, not geographically, which is phase two and which is phase three?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
So if I look at the page that's in our pack, the page that is labeled phase three was originally phase two?
So if you were to look at this map, this was phase three and this was phase two. So they were just switched.
Do either of these? I mean, neither of them have significant multifamily housing or anything like that?
No. So the only. I I the only town home style development happens in phase four.
That's where they.
Basically seen.
That's where they are, okay.
Closer to the park. I think they assumed when they started this that the, if you remember going from south to north, the housing prices, list prices decreases as you go to the north. I think they assume that the the middle row would probably be more
Move a little faster.
Moving faster, but it's actually the higher dollar one. Again, for staff's perspective, getting that that second connection into the subdivision would be a wonderful thing.
And so, just so I can kind of orient myself here, phase two is the southernmost and phase like four B is the northern scrap.
Question, but the date of phase three, without October 24, 2024 would come quicker. How quick would you estimate that?
It just depends. So for instance, phase two, if this gets approved tonight, the new phase two, the document's already submitted. So it's going to be that October 2021 date. And then typically, it's about 60%. Depends on the developer. So if they feel like they've gotten to about 60% sold or marketed, then they will move on to the next phase. Right now, housing interest rates are very low. And we are building a a little bit faster clip than even any staff expected. Not grossly more, but it's it is happening a little faster than expectation.
So we're implying, when we look at this phasing or this overall flat, where are, I know there's the green space that goes in there, but where are the parts?
So the the part is, in two seconds. So it's actually being made part of phase two, runs right down the center. So there's a portion of it that's already established in grass. The remaining portion of the park will be put in with phase two now instead of what would have been phase two the other direction. Then this is park on the very northern edge. And then there's stormwater retention and park. So there'll be a big L-shaped. This will all be green space and dedicated to the city. But this is actually already in. It's been seeded.
It might get leveled with the.
We 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 graddled it so that people can utilize it. I would like to to look at getting that paved when phase four gets in there and we have another outlet. So it will outlet into phase four when we get to that point. But soccer fields are very sorely needed right now. So it takes almost two years to get the grass established enough to let them play on it, so.
Chris, how does this affect the plan that was to have to have moderately to lower-priced housing included in this?
That was always going to come at the end.
Okay.
Regardless of you switch these two phases, that housing was always going to come at the end because it's the furthest away and they've been most modern infrastructure to get to. So in both scenarios, in both subdivisions, that will come at the very last phase.
The east, the eastern edge of this, is that Lisbon?
Correct.
This seems like a weight of how many city staff, public works, and also the developer. Not that we have to, we're worried about them, but at a no-cost scenario here. So I'm going to put on the floor of the move of resolution 10 dash 5, that 2028, approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment through agreement of private development binding between the city of Mount Vernon and Midwest Development Company.
I'll say it.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Herman?
Yes.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Weasley?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Next item. Resolution 10 dash 5, that 2028, accepting work for the project known as the wagon passage trailer excavating and grading.
Total project cost ended up being $126,269.15 after the 30-day waiting period. So once this resolution is passed, there's no 30-day waiting period. Then the city would be free to release the $6,313.46. All in all, happy with the project. We did have, certainly after it was constructed, some major rains that sent soil and washed out on the gravel road that has been cleaned up. So, yeah. We definitely support it.
Thanks for crossing off another project on the list. You've got a better shot. We've got to do a lot lately.
I'll go ahead and move resolution 10 dash 5 dash 2028, accepting work for the project known as the wagon passage trailer excavating and grading.
I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Weasley?
Yes.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All right. The motion for approval, item one, consideration claims list. In question, item 10, motion.
I will move to approve the claims list as we have it.
One second.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, item two, discussion of consideration of pay application 15, 2019 wastewater treatment plant improvements. Chris, anything to add to it?
No. $25,950.72.
I'll make a motion through pay application number 15, wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, next item, discussion and consideration of pay application number one, South Valley improvements.
It's good to get this one, Julie.
After 15 years, yeah?
Yeah. First half is in the amount of $59,471.71.
Is is everything that we're seeing going east-west through that part of the lot?
Storm sewer work.
Okay. So is it related to this or is it just?
Yes. So all of the water that is coming down, those improvements needed to be made to correct issues that were already occurring.
Okay.
Excuse me, when Sonny owned the building or operated the business on the backside there, that little opening water with pool there, sometimes make it inside their door.
Gotcha.
And with ice stuff, horrible.
Yeah.
But it's moving along.
Yeah. Aye.
Well, in that case, I'll move approval of pay application one for the South Valley improvements.
I'll second.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Pauline. Here is next item, discussion and consideration of pay application number three, nature park trail.
Uh, this is $3,207.25. Getting closer to inclusion of the project as well.
I'll make a motion through the application number three on the nature park trail project.
I'll second.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, next item, discussion and consideration of pay application three, wastewater.
This is $193.23, but this gets us to the seeing the odds that they wouldn't propose it, but the way Iowa law works.
Maybe the smallest pay application we've seen.
I know.
You're right, Chuck.
There you go. Is it, is there a decimal that was true?
Exactly.
I'll go ahead and move pay application number three for the wagon pass.
I'll second.
Call of favor.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, next item, discussion and consideration of service ingredients. Eclat or housing, free rehabilitation.
So this is kind of a continuation of a grant that we received. The Housing Commission is utilizing the loan-modern income funds that have already been collected through TIP. That is a pot of money as the subdivisions continue to grow. That's just going to continue to bear fruit for at least the next 15-plus years. Capping after that, obviously, it has to be a lot of loan-modern income housing. Easy Cog is equipped because they've run programs similar to this, much more equipped than my staff does. At $600, it's a pretty good margin.
So, I'll move approval of, um, the six hundred dollars program administrative costs, uh, for this program, uh, utilizing services. I'll second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Close. Here is next item, reports, public library year-end report.
I'm Kathy Fox from the Public Library. Diana Corcoran is also here tonight. She is on our order trustees. And in your council packet, you have our year-end report from Grace and myself. And I divided it half like I normally send to you, so it was very easy to compare to last year's report. And then, partway through, I changed it to part two, service to the community during a pandemic, to kind of show you the ways that we felt we needed to go out into the community since we weren't able to invite the community in. We continue to do curbside pickup. Um, this summer, we went to the Davis Park where they were doing free lunches and handed out our Wednesday workshop science kits. We did two hundred of those a week. And, um, we also did book deliveries and the science kits to kids' club at the elementary school. And then, once the free lunch distribution ended, we sent science packets in with the, um, food pantry deliveries to those families, um, in our area. So, those were some of the ways that we went out into the public. We are continuing to do curbside. We do story time to go since we aren't having story time in the library. And then, we're also doing book bundles so that if you have a child that is school age, K through twelve, you tell me their name, their interests, maybe some books they like, I would put together a bundle of books for you to pick up curbside for them to read. All of those programs have been very successful. I've been kind of passing on some of those good notes to my board. If you'd like to be included in that love, I would hopefully send them on to you as well. One of the things we just started doing is I am working with the day camps at the Lester Burris Community Center, and I am putting together books to individual children. They're letting me know what they like to read, what reading level, authors they like. And then, a book comes to them with their name on the front of it, so each one is individually selected for that child. And we'll continue to do that as long as they're doing day camps. Of the eleven Lynn County libraries, only four libraries have, are allowing people to come in, very limited hours. Um, and none are doing in-house programming. We are doing our first program this Wednesday. It is a drive-in puppet show, just like a drive-in movie theater. Eileen Spiegel will be here from West Liberty, and, um, I think it'll be a very successful evening. But we are trying to do all different types of things to connect people with the libraries.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the laptop for Cornell students?
The library is open. If you are a Cornell student, you can enter on the third floor, and they are utilizing that part of the library. Their computer lab is on the second floor. Um, but we are not opening our first floor door to have people in the library. We feel like we've got this very delicate balance, keeping everybody healthy. So, yeah, and Grace is on maternity leave, so I am your one and only. So, it's very crucial I stay healthy.
Thanks for having me.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next item, under discussion item, possible twenty-eight E agreements for police services.
Just wanted to kind of open up discussion with council a little bit. Um, I met with Lisbon City Council last, uh, last week discussing the twenty-eight E agreement for police services with them. Basically, reviewed the contract with them. The only feedback we got from them was looking at some, trying to figure out some type of a cap on the dollar amount or how much of an increase they would see, um, each year from their proposal. So, working with Chris and the city attorneys right now, we're trying to figure out the proper language and put in there to cap that dollar amount for them. But, um, beyond that, they really didn't seem, everything seemed pretty positive as far as the language we had in the contract. So, I just wanted to open up and make sure we had opportunities to share that with you guys and discuss, um, questions that you may have or concerns that you may have, or thoughts that you may have.
And just, it's the plan you discussed with them was what you have presented with the structure with the advisory committee and the whole of that.
There was a little, a little conversation, and there may be some more conversation, just, um, discussion of the, the Public Safety Advisory Board. And, um, but it, like I said, the main, main topics of conversation, the, the due points for me were coming back with the, trying to control that cap of an annual increase so they would, they could plan and understand what's coming next, that they wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be a significant increase. And then, as I shared with them too, anything outside of the norm would, would start and originate through an advisory board and come back to both councils and discussion that way, so.
So, there is an opener, um, for unforeseen, or, you know, for instance, the, the big one would be dispatch fees. So, you can go from one year, not paying anything, to what we did five years ago, to here you go, we're gonna start charging you. That would open the, the dollar amount automatically, and you would receive a recommendation from the advisory group to both councils as far as, uh, cost or consent. Beyond that, the, the language that's, um, being utilized is, is similar to that of, of the amended contract language in the previous. So, it's either this number or this number depending on where they fall, um, and expenses. So, that should at least, um, you know, the concern, obviously, is that we would get them locked into this. We would transfer, you know, vehicles and do all this other stuff and then hit them with a twenty percent increase. So, um, I think this language, when it's done, um, should be good for both communities. And, um, really, like I said, in the, in the present form that it's in, very comfortable and happy for both entities, um, if it works for each of us. I will say, I, I did want to make a point. There was a letter to the editor regarding, um.
I was just gonna.
Me too.
So, first and foremost, um, you know, it made it sound like the city of Mount Vernon put a gun to the head of the, the fire district to change the format. And the reality is, that is as far from the truth as possible. So, the, the issue that occurred, uh, with Lynn County is their tax base, um, is set by the state. So, they get, you know, so many pennies per thousand, and it's, it's, it's set. So, the only growth they see in that tax base is growth that they see in their fire district. So, from a valuation standpoint, which remains fairly minimal. The expenses, um, continue to increase at rates that their tax base cannot keep up with. So, what, what we were running into is, um, the fire district was not able to meet their half of the obligation when we would have to buy a new piece of equipment. And they weren't necessarily borrowing ahead, but the city was already picking up a larger share of certain equipment purchases. And at that point, when I sat down with the fire district, we realized that this was not sustainable. And we, we worded an agreement in such a manner that was actually, um, done quite well so that the, the fire district itself would, would not feel like the city was taking over. If you remember, there's a, a payback clause. So, if, if this relationship doesn't work out, we owe the fire district money for their half of the investment. And, um, it's, it honestly ends up being a win-win for both entities. And we've been this way for the last year, and we've received zero complaints. It's easier for, for the chief to, to go and, and make purchases without having to get a check cut from both entities. From an equipment standpoint, it's easier for him to go through and, um, make planned purchases. So, really, there's been little to no difference. And I can tell you during the derecho event, there were individuals from both. From the fire district outside of our corporate limits, inside our corporate limits helping, and vice versa. I mean, I was taken back by the letter to the editor because that was as far from the truth in my dealings with it that I could ever attest to, and I would venture to say the fire district would be the same. We presented a solution, um, that ended up working for both entities and was, and we spoke through it for an entire year and a half before we got to the final language, so.
You have to consider the source.
Much, and that was the platform used for the current agreement that we're in as well.
Yeah, exactly.
You probably caught, which I've caught, in their revising, but there's a few where they left the word "fire" in there on a couple of the amendments that we had and stuff, so. Again, trying to, you know, with Lisbon bringing that forward to us and requesting, um, for us to look at this, you know, this kind of combining of services and stuff like that, I think it's a natural flow for us. And it was a, you know, we didn't have to reinvent a whole lot. We already had it working very well from, from that standpoint, so.
And, and on the flip side, just so everybody's aware, why we're setting it up this way. Keep in mind that should this joint venture not work, um, should they decide, one of the entities decide in the future that this, this relationship isn't worth it and they want to, to go ahead and split back out. Changing our structure would be a budgetary detriment to us. So, the reason that we have established it this way is I know today, presenting to you what our cost of our full-time department is, and we are simply bringing two officers over, um, as part of this. And then, it's a purely kind of a contract basis and similar to the CD chief. We have an advisory board. The, the governing bodies still have ultimate say, but we have an advisory board that will make, um, day-to-day, uh, recommendations with the chief. And, like I said, should either entity walk away, we haven't changed our budget. That would cause us angst in the future. And that was important to me because if, if we were to go in a joint venture, let's just say that it was a combined, uh, situation. You're talking about who owns what equipment. We have a facility over here that we would be using. The, the contract gets a lot longer. And then, again, if, like I said, if you end up divorcing at some point in the future, um, it becomes a messier divorce than what it is today. I don't personally feel like Lisbon would be out, um, anything. We're not trying to take over anything. If anything, it makes the officer's job just a little bit more difficult because they have to track two sets of ordinances, but there are things that are very similar. Um, state code doesn't change between city boundaries. It's just being familiar with ordinances on, on both ends. So, um, there are some positives for Mount Vernon, for sure. Uh, we got a slightly bigger department with eight officers that we can now afford and a, and an administrative assistant full-time. More, um, more flexibility in the shifts, more ability to, like a COVID time period, to lose an officer here and there without affecting the overall operation. Giving Chief Shannon more opportunity to, to take a break. And so, that's a positive for us. We get probably, hopefully, you know, officers to stay longer because we can compete with Marion and Cedar Rapids to a certain extent. We're always going to be competing uphill with the bigger entities. But, um, it does at least let us stay in the, the same ball field.
And I, I just want to underscore that comment as well because the last two officers that we've lost, we've lost due unstable scheduling type of situations and different things like that. When we lose, you know, when somebody's off on sick time, this person's moving over here to cover, and it's just kind of a constant juggling act from that standpoint. Whereas with eight officers, when you can use all of those resources, the same resources both communities have more efficiently. There were many times where, you know, if you work and we have our two officers out, they would have two officers out. You'd have four out in the community. So, being able to manage that, spread that out, um, if an officer calls in sick, there's already somebody else working. So, you don't need to move anybody to make sure that you still have twenty-four-seven, maybe twenty-four-seven coverage, so. That's a huge, I want to definitely underscore that how big of it, I think that, I don't think it's going to solve the problem, um, by any means, but it's definitely going to provide a significant help, um, to addressing some of those issues, I think. We'll still have challenges. We're still gonna have those that's coming through. We're still a small department, but it will definitely be helpful from that standpoint.
From a timeline standpoint, what, what are you thinking, take the terms of having this not wrapped up per se, but at least?
I would personally, just because we're both operating, they're operating with one officer. We're operating one short in the hiring process and everything else. So, um, the sooner we can get it done for both entities, I think the better off we are for everybody. I think we can honestly, if you're looking at, if you look, the twenty-eight E has a sixty-day clause, um, built into it so that if we sign that agreement, um, let's say November fir-, by November first, um, it's sixty days after that and then that agreement will go into place, so you'd be looking at January one anyway. And I think that's a pretty feasible and pretty realistic, um, timeline, as long as there's no other, and like I said, we didn't have major, didn't hear major issues other than the, the stuff that we've already discussed here. So, I definitely wanted to give you the opportunity to see if there was something hanging out there that Chris and I haven't worked through with the attorneys or anything from that standpoint. But I think realistically, from the operations standpoint, we could, we could look at that timeline, timeline of January first, February first, somewhere in there, um, pretty realistically. And then, you're, it's going to take a year to do the blend, um, you know, coming up with the rebranding and probably a year, maybe a year and a half to get all of it debugged. But we can start that process, and the public would, would benefit from the service immediately, so.
Good. So, you mentioned the sixty-day clause to start. What is the out clause? Did I miss something?
So, the out clause, um, once there's notification, um, that they want to, if, if a party wants to terminate from that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I think it's, you have to give a, um, year's notice, and then there's a two-year timeout, um, from that. So, it allows both entities to kind of go through the budget process, to spin it back, and make sure that we have, everybody's, you know, you're not blindsided with something from that standpoint.
And the original agreement still is a, an initial five-year commitment?
I've got two other questions. Um, is it fair for me to assume that you guys have looked at call counts from each community? You know, with a history to keep, keep that in mind and consider it?
I mean, a lot of, a lot, I mean, it's not gonna be a significant increase. We're, we're dealing with their call counts already.
Yeah.
We've been dealing with it since twenty sixteen.
You're right.
From that standpoint, and so kind of going back to the ordinance aspect as well. The officers have been juggling the two ordinances since twenty sixteen, and so it'll just get a little bit deeper from that standpoint. They'll get a little better understanding, um, rather than trying to take a report and then deferring it over to a Lisbon officer. They'll just follow up and deal with that. It's not a, not a huge issue. Um, the biggest, probably the, the most problematic thing that, you know, our software reporting when we issue citations or violations, it's, um, all, a lot of our numbers coincide, so example speeding is sixty-three point zero one for both communities. Ours has an MB in front of it, theirs has an LI in front of it. And so, the officer's like in the middle of the street, you know, at three o'clock in the morning, they're clicking the wrong one, and then we've got to deal with that, but it's, that's easy. That's me and a little bit of my time, so.
All right, so my second question is, given that letter to the editor, have either of you heard any input from community members of either community?
I have not.
I have not.
Okay, thank you.
It's just good, you know, I wanted to clarify that tonight because it's, that's how something like this, I think, goes south very fast, and, um, it, it, I think, it, what it does do is play on the fears.
Yes, that's where I asked the question.
And so, um, this is a, this is a good thing for both cities. It allows us to maintain a, a higher quality officer. We are already, um, offering Mount Vernon residents full-time police department. They made that decision years ago, and this is where we're at. So, we are already operating a full-time police. So we are already operating a full-time police department. Lisbon, obviously even smaller than Mount Vernon, in a population standpoint, you know, it's hard to maintain a three-officer rotation, just like it's hard to maintain a five or six-officer rotation. We're operating with the minimum amount of officers needed, minimum, in order to make the full-time police department work. We will be more efficient between the two entities. Doug brought up a great point. There are times where we will have two officers on, they will have two officers on at the same time. But then we'll have two officers on or an officer on at a later time. And so the efficiencies are just horrific between, and again, this is purely public safety. This has nothing to do with perceived politics between the two entities. Mount Vernon does not want to take over Lisbon, we don't want the school district. None of what was said in that letter is true. We have enough headaches over here. This is the one area, public safety, that makes absolute sense. And we could, between the two entities, have something that a number of communities, even the size of 7,000, don't have. For anybody that would question why that's necessary, speaking from experience, if you have a loved one that needs immediate attention and you need somebody to respond 15, within 15 minutes, I mean, our response times are incredible and they're not going to change. That's huge. So again, I think this is a win-win for both entities for various reasons. But yeah, I just, I needed to say that, I don't. I don't put it out there, but it needed to be, it needs to be said.
I do know Lisbon's next step is they, you know, like I said, want to bring it in front of you guys, but I think they also want to do it, bring it to a public session of some type before they vote on it. And so I think that's kind of what they're looking at from our standpoint, make sure we're kind of good with it, with the way the language is kind of sitting. And then probably take it to the public and make sure that we've got 99% of the things kind of ironed out before we present it to the public. And I think they're, they're ready to do that and I think they're ready to go forward with it as, as we can if everything holds in place.
I have a question, Chief Shannon, what's your negotiations been with the city council? The mayor's now back engaging, as I understand.
Correct.
Is he part of this discussion?
He was at the meeting Monday, he ran the meeting.
The hiring process is starting to wrap up, I think, in Lisbon as far as city managers concerned. That person probably can't veto something like this, but could, they could have a dampening effect if they philosophically are opposed to that. Is that a hurdle that we need to deal with or that's not a problem or how do you want to, I mean?
Right. Well, the council supports it.
But I think.
No, no, that's why they can't veto it, but he can drag his feet on it.
Doug made an absolute, we both said this from the very start, but it's not our job to sell this. This makes a lot of sense. If you look at it on paper, it makes sense for both entities. Politically, if they feel differently, we're not out anything. I mean, we are where we're at. So the basis is, we've got an agreement put together. For us, it's up to Lisbon to decide if this, if they agree with us that this is the best move for it. We think it is. Even if the next individual comes in, doesn't see it that way, then, you know, we've been here before.
And it's also just reminding, this was, this was a request they brought forward to us to, I mean, so it's originated from Lisbon and that's exactly what I believe needs to happen if it's going to go. And that's where I've been straight up with their administrators and their council members and their mayor as well. It was just like Chris said, I'm not going to sell this to Lisbon, I'm not, this is their task to make sure that it's what's in the best interest of their community. I will help them any way I can do that and be part of that. And I have no doubt, I, my position has never changed that it is the best decision for both communities, for public safety, for police department aspect. That position has never changed and, you know, we had this conversation in 2012, 2016, and again in 2010, and my position's never changed on that.
My only concern is the initial costs. So we're going to, the name on the police department's going to change? Or is it going to still say Mount Vernon or is it going to say Mount Vernon, Lisbon?
Be Mount Vernon, Lisbon.
And then on the cars? So what I'm concerned about is, let's say five, within that five-year period, they get the cycle so that they can get out of it in five years. I worry about that cost because it's not cheap putting those letters up on that building. It's not cheap to put the things in the cars and to change the stationery and all the other stuff. And are they going to pay for part of that switch back? Or are they just going to say, oh, we're done and all, we don't, we only have to change two cars and you guys take care of all the rest of the costs switching yourself?
It's, the reason for such an elongated period is it, it is a big decision for both entities, but once we both get into this, it will be difficult for both to decide to part ways. Not necessarily difficult, but there will be expenses on both sides. To answer your question in short, my job is to make sure that we don't necessarily get stuck holding it still. But what will end up happening is, just like everything else, we stick money aside in a depreciation account to fund expenses and will likely do the same with, should that occur. How do they do their cars? Do they stake money away? I don't know.
I believe they have a rollover account as well every year, kind of like what we do.
So they'd be in charge of two vehicles themselves or something like that? No, this is a purely a contract basis. So we would put it in our budget, similar to what we do with the fire department right now, and we present it to the advisory board and they get to see all of the numbers and where the money's going and what is happening. So it's not any different than, like I said, that Lynn County, they cut us a check. Basically what they're given in the tax dollars on a monthly basis, they cut us a check for their portion of it. We have an advisory commission, but ultimately the fire department is the city of Mount Vernon. But they have two vehicles, right?
They have three vehicles. But what, so as we merge into that situation, we have four vehicles, they have three vehicles. We're going to get rid of two of their vehicles and bring one over from that standpoint. We don't, we don't need that many cars from that standpoint. So when, you know, and that's one thing I did through the budget process and through looking at this collectively is looking at, you know, as you guys are fully aware, a large percentage of my budget is people. A small percentage of my budget is everything else that we deal with. So bringing in that number that we've included on the 2080 proposal has a portion of that designed to, this is, here's what it costs to have that officer sitting in our office, running a computer, here's all the licensing fees and ID for the software programs that they have to do, the training aspects, all of those kind of personnel are all kind of included into that number on an annual basis. So a portion of what they're paying is going to be helping maintain those two positions that we have in there as well. So it's, that's, like I said, I tried to take a holistic look at that and bring all of that into one place so that we can continue seamlessly for the most part. Again, that branding portion, figuring out, you know, what's the patch, what's, how's it going to represent both communities, you know, there'd be a lot of conversation in bringing that up. Honestly, the lettering of the building and the graphics on the vehicle could be as simple, like our new design of the blue and white, the more of the blue and white car. You'll notice I have two vehicles that are older stripe kits, two vehicles that are the blue and white. So the blue and white could easily be transitioned over into just where our patch is on that vehicle is putting on the new patch over the old one. And nothing else needs to be done with that other than where it says Mount Vernon, it would now peel that off and put on Mount Vernon, Lisbon. So it's not a full restripe of every single vehicle we have. I think we can take a couple of them and easily transition a couple of them, we'd have to redo.
And we have that built into the vehicle replacement plan anyway, so it's not an issue to be.
Right, I know, but, but, you know, I mean, I trust Doug, I trust Chris to know how to, and to Doug's point, as is true with the vast majority of industries out there, it's the people that cost the money. I mean, not to sneeze at the cost of a car, but relative to the cost for an officer or two, it's really almost inconsequential.
The end game for both entities is to not turn over personnel like we haven't. They've dealt with it.
And the savings that we would see in doing so would far outweigh any of the other concerns.
Just having a stable department would be huge. And then, you know, moving forward in the future, while the initial investment is five years, is for that very reason. So you wouldn't want to put a plan in place knowing that it takes two years to get through all of that process and expenses there, only to have it end, you know, shortly thereafter. So that's the initial five-year window. And why it becomes a little lengthy, obviously, and there's more cost involved, but we're watching this work every day. I mean, whether or not anybody knows it, in Mount Vernon or Lisbon right now, Mount Vernon PD has been responding for the last four years at various times throughout the day and vice versa. Lisbon cars have come over here as well. So for these guys, they have been doing it in the five-year pipeline here, more so than anybody on their entity will probably ever know.
And also, they had a, do they still have a K-9 unit or it's gone? How did they finance that K-9 unit?
City-funded.
So will they be pitching in for our K-9?
Our K-9 is pretty much volunteer-funded, donation-funded and funded.
But since they had one, it's all included in the contract.
There's one number, here's the dollar amount and it's.
However we spend it, it's how we spend it.
Whatever, whatever we, I mean, if we were going to implement a new program, it would probably start at the advisory board. This is what we want to do, we pitch it to both councils and figure out something new from there. If it was something new that's coming in, or as Chris alluded to earlier too, if there was a, you know, a major purchase coming up or something like that, it would start at the advisory board, go back to both councils, so everybody's aware, everybody's on the same page of the transparencies there, and we would make decisions that way.
You have an increase in expenses that you will see in your budget and an increase in revenue from the payment coming in. So that's what you will see and then line item is where that money will all be deducted to.
All right. Need to help anything? Thanks, James.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
All right, who want to report? Anything from a research standpoint, anybody that can interfere? Anybody? Chris?
Just that I'm in the office Thursday, Friday. The second meeting, the Zoom meeting for the bypasses occurring on Wednesday, and I sent everybody the video. Scott had some good suggestions that I'm going to take them up on as far as trying to get video in the future, but I bought that camera in the morning and was very happy that I had got all the video off it to begin with. A lot of good information and I shared it with you. And the Zoom will be recorded as well, so I'll share that as well.
So to, you do know that to watch that, you had to subscribe to a Dropbox, right?
I figured that out afterwards. So my apologies. I was trying to find a platform that would take that much memory.
Have a large file.
Five large files.
It's five large ones and I get it, there aren't a lot of options, but I just didn't know if you were aware of that.
Not till after I sent it to everybody.
Couldn't that be uploaded to the city website?
Not that much. That, that much data would crash the city website. I mean, theoretically, yes, we'd have to cut down the quality, which would be fine. And there's ways it could be done, but, and potentially not with how the city site is constructed right now. My understanding is we could have.
It's on my list.
Yeah. Gone to a cloud site and created a link to this cloud site, which would require a subscription as well, or gone through like Iowa Solutions to take more memory. But even zipping one of the files, I just kind of laughed when we got it all the way done.
But with your Microsoft project, your products, your Microsoft products, you should have access to a cloud that comes with that.
Correct.
Why don't we just post it to YouTube?
Well, I mean, just the one, I don't remember how big all five were, but just the first one was nearly four gigabytes. I don't know what YouTube's limits are.
YouTube does, you know, these tech conferences and stuff all the time, tech talk, TED Talks, and there are, I have two hours, three hours.
They're still not that, they're still not four gigabytes. I mean, I see what you're saying. And the short answer to your question is yes, there's a way to do it, we just got to sit down and figure out how to do it.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Chris, anything else? Anybody else?
Just a comment that the doors of Mount Vernon Bank and the lobby are now open. So that does mean that we can open up conversation again with the bank to get the our town, it's not our town, it's the Channel 9 camera, the weather cam.
Oh.
Up and running, because we were, you know, waiting for that point in time. So we're going to start those conversations again in terms of the CD chief market. That would be nice when we get that up.
Anybody else have anything? No further business, we can stay on the chair.